All right, so I will let us go ahead and begin. So our staff who have been here all day can do this and then go home and, you know, rest a little bit. So today we have representatives from the Internalization Working Group. We, I don't know if you want to say something before we get started, Dr. Presidia, but we do have Ms. Klemenko. I'm going to mess up your last name.
So we have Principal Teresa Fennessy from Herndon Elementary School and Sarah Duffy from Terrace Center. She is a Language Through Content teacher. And they did not prepare any presentation slides, but we thought it might be helpful for them to be here to help answer questions that she might have.
Okay, thank you. So we will go through the presentation and then if they'd like to share some things and then we'll take questions from the board as we did with the other work sessions. And you'll explain sort of what we're looking for today in this presentation from the board.
I'm going to explain everything just as well as I did in the previous presentation that went so well. So if you liked that one, you're really going to like this one. I would like to say for the record, though, LT members are disappearing. So, you know, Dr. Ivy and I are getting full credit points for being here in the evening with you. So, and honestly, I am happy to be here and answer as many questions as I can because I know that this is a really important topic to many board members. It's a really important topic to me as well. A number of you know that both of my children go to immersion in Fairfax County. They started immersion when they were in preschool. And I am a founding member of a charter immersion school in another state. So I believe very, very strongly in immersion and international learning experiences. And my enthusiasm and passion for world languages is probably only surpassed by Mr. McElveen's who, and Mr. Moons and Ms. Palacek and others. But it was really Mr. McElveen and his advocacy that created the opportunity for us to have this work session here today. And we certainly appreciate him doing that and we appreciate him returning on the red eye from work in China to be here with us. And also he did provide a number of questions to us yesterday afternoon. We'd be happy to try to answer some of those here today, but we're certainly happy to answer those individually offline in writing or in person as well.
By the way, Mr. McElveen is returning back to China on Wednesday. So he really came just for this.
Oh, my goodness. We just raised the stakes exponentially. So just by way of introduction, again, I would say that the full report is posted on Board Docs. It's not nearly as lengthy as the last work session presentation on FCPS On. But today's presentation and this particular work session is going to focus on a few of the key recommendations that we want to discuss in more detail as it pertains to expanding world language programs and international learning opportunities. So with that being said, I would like to go ahead and just start with a reminder about how we got to where we are today. In 2013, we did convene a working group that met from November to June of 2014 to develop recommendations to expand world language program offerings. And the goal was to expand world language program offerings to all of our students in Fairfax County as well as create more opportunities for international learning experiences for our students. And we had a pretty large working group. We had members of the leadership team, school-based staff, principals, teachers, community members, board members-to-be. Ms. Corbett Sanders was a member of that group. And the group developed, as I said, a large number of recommendations, over 15 recommendations. And we presented those to the school board in 2014. So what we want to provide today is some updates on some of those key recommendations and some in regards to some of the work that has been done to this point. So just to start, a few of the highlights of accomplishments. We did develop and have implemented new curriculum that is referred to as Language Through Content. And that curriculum is part-time curriculum. Students at the elementary schools that are Language Through Content schools get about 60 minutes of instruction in a week in the target language. And the LTC curriculum has replaced our FLESS curriculum, our Foreign Language at the Elementary School curriculum. And I'll talk more about what that looks like in just a minute. But when you hear LTC, or Language Through Content, it's referring to our part-time elementary programming. We have developed in our, in the process of implementing in pilot settings, some expanded opportunities for immersion students at the middle school to get content language taught in the target language. That's something we'd like to expand even further. We have added division-wide high school course offerings through our academy programs and through our online campus in Arabic, Chinese, and Korean. And I just need to point out as we start this conversation that we've received very generous support from the Korean government, which we would not have received or continue to receive without Mr. Moon's advocacy. So we thank him very much for all the work that he does on behalf of our students and families. We've also implemented the Virginia Seal of Biliteracy to recognize our students that are graduating that are bilingual. And we implemented the Global Classroom Project, which, again, I'll talk about in more detail, but it connects our students in FCPS with students in other countries around the world to work on collaborative learning projects. So to start out, the first of the recommendations that I'd like to highlight was with respect to our elementary immersion programs. So the working group did recommend that we would expand school-based two-way immersion programs and other world language immersion programs in critical languages across the county. So when we first start talking about our immersion programs, I think it's kind of interesting to note that next year in 2019, we will celebrate the 30th anniversary of immersion programming in Fairfax County. So we've had immersion programming in the county for a really long time. And you can see that we still have limited access to immersion programming 30 years later. So there's some good news there. We were definitely on the forefront of innovation in public education around world languages, but we haven't been successful perhaps in expanding as much as any of us might have liked to or hoped that we might have been able to. So as a reminder about what our immersion programming is, in immersion program, students get their content instruction in the target language. So in Fairfax, you're getting your content instruction in math and science and health in the target language. And we have a couple different types of immersion programs. We have our division-wide lottery programs. You can see we've got 13 schools, the five languages that are represented there. And then we have school-based immersion programs as well. We've got four different schools with school-based programs where a lottery is not required. And basically, that means at that particular school, the population is such that you have a mix of native English speakers and native speakers of the immersion target language, which in this case is Spanish. So together, you've got a population to provide two-way immersion. So students get part of their instruction in English and part of their instruction in Spanish, and there's a mutual benefit. English language learners are getting reinforcement in their native language of Spanish in this case, and they're getting English instruction. Native English speakers are getting exposure to the target language of Spanish. And this is a relatively cost-effective way to staff immersion programs because you're not hiring additional immersion teachers. And you'll notice on this slide that we actually have a high potential for expansion in two-way immersion programs. We've got 27 schools in Fairfax County right now that have more than 35% of their students who are native Spanish speakers and English learners. So we have an opportunity for a really robust two-way immersion program in one of those schools. Okay, I'm going through this kind of fast because I know it's late. We can come back and unpack if you have more questions about the different types of program models. In terms of benefits, I already touched on some of these. You know, there are a number of benefits. I know many of the folks on the board are familiar with some of the research around increased cognitive flexibility and cognitive development for students that are bilingual and that are learning languages. As I already mentioned, the two-way immersion programs are cost-effective and we do have a large number of schools that would have the possibility for expansion and two-way immersion. But if you're wondering why we haven't expanded more rapidly than we have, we need to kind of pause and unpack some of these challenges for just a minute. It has been very difficult for us to recruit teachers that are bilingual and that are elementary licensed. That has been a barrier and an obstacle for schools in terms of expanding programming. We also have a problem in our immersion programs where we have student attrition. So you might start out in a two-way immersion class with a nicely balanced class of, you know, 12 speakers that are native English speakers and 12 speakers that are native Spanish speakers. And by the time you get to third grade, you might have dropped a lot of students out of that program because they might be accessing other programs. For example, AAP is one of the biggest problems that we have around attrition in our programs. So that's one of the reasons, mobility obviously is another issue, but that's one of the reasons that we've really tried to point towards the possibility for expansion, being in those schools where we have 35% of the students that are non-native English speakers and would be native speakers of the target language, because those students could fill in some of those vacancies in classes. If some students leave for whatever purpose or for whatever reason, it's easier to staff those classes, but it's still a challenge. And that might be something that Ms. Fennessy might be able to shed some light on and share some perspective around as well. And then we have had a number of competing priorities in the school system. Obviously, our conversation around the strategic plan and streamlining that earlier today, I think, kind of highlights all of the things that we had been asking schools to do. We're trying to narrow that down and focus our work, which is really good. But even, even with that, there are a number of competing priorities in terms of high need schools. A lot of our higher need schools, lower SES schools have really been focused around accreditation issues and haven't felt that they've had as much opportunity to really take risks to put in new programming because they felt like they had to get the programming that's already in place running really well before they could add additional programming and put additional professional development demands on their teachers. So there are a number of challenges, and those are just a few. I'd like to move next to our elementary part-time programs, our former FLESS programs and now Language Through Content programs. So the working group had recommended that we replace those FLESS programs with Language Through Content and specifically that the Language Through Content be focused on STEAM content. And one of the reasons for that is we had a lot of feedback from principals primarily, but teachers as well, that the Language Through Content program, since it's only a part-time program and only 60 minutes a week, that schools really wanted reinforcement of other content learning to happen. So we kind of went full steam ahead with that recommendation and we rewrote our entire elementary curriculum for part-time programming. And it might not sound like a lot, but it was a lot. We had to do that at all seven grade levels, K through six, and we had to translate that into eight different languages. So that was a lot of curriculum development that happened. I think we've seen, and again, you know, we would certainly like to hear from Sarah on that point, but I think we've seen some pros and some cons with that. And I think we have seen reinforcement of content in the STEAM areas, which has been really good. And I think we've seen a struggle in some instances for teachers to feel comfortable with the math content and the science content and really wanting to focus lots of times more on just the basic types of language, functional language, if you will, skills that a part-time program such as a 60-minute-a-week program would be designed to deliver. A 60-minute-a-week program is not going to get you communicative competence. It's not going to get you proficiency, but it can get you exposure in functional language. So key vocabulary, phrases, greetings, right? And it can start to expose you to the cultural ideas and the respect for the language and the culture and then build on that interest and engagement in further course-taking opportunities when you get to middle and high school. So again, we've seen some pros and we've seen some cons. In terms of our program expansion, we have been able to add about 12 schools since the working group recommendations were released. Those schools primarily came online when we went to Full Day Monday. And that's probably a topic that we want to unpack and talk a little bit more about in terms of staffing and funding. I know that some board members have some questions about that. So we have seen some expansion here, but again, we are not universal in our LTC programming at this point. So benefits again and challenges, a lot of the same benefits that we touched on with immersion in terms of, you know, the cognitive flexibility, the cultural appreciation that I already mentioned. And again, just highlighting that this is really around functional language as opposed to communicative competence. But the challenges again are very similar. So finding, you know, teachers particularly in your less commonly taught languages, when we think about Korean programs or Chinese programs or Arabic programs, it becomes even more difficult to find licensed teachers in those languages. One of the really big challenges for our principals has been the staffing allocations. So as I said, we can unpack this a little bit more, but currently, the way that we're staffing our LTC programs is basically part of your special staffing allocation. And for a teacher to bring on a part-time program oftentimes means that they would have to trade out another program. So if they have a teacher that's leaving, right, they would maybe have some flexibility. So if you had, for example, you know, a strings teacher, this is a bad example, but I'm going to use it because I already said it. But if you had a particular special, see Noel's up here and she's like, oh, my gosh, she's just going rogue up here at this point. But, but the reality is if you had a teacher who was leaving in your specials rotation, it would be a lot easier to say, okay, this might be a time for me to make a program adjustment. Maybe I don't want to continue with that particular program at the same level of staffing. This might be an opportunity for me to bring on a new program. But if you don't have that luxury, luxury, right? If you don't have that opportunity, it's a lot harder to say that I might reduce a program or reduce a staff member's assignment to bring on a new program. And that has been a real challenge for our principals to face in terms of bringing on new programs. I also did include competing priorities on here like STEM. And I think sometimes we lose sight a little bit. I mean, I'm even guilty of this myself coming from, you know, working in other states before I came to Fairfax. Sometimes I take for granted the breadth of curriculum choices and options that we have at the elementary level, you know? Band, strings, chorus, STEAM, AAP, a robust library program, right? I mean, we have so much, which is great. It's fantastic. Those are, those are the kinds of things that I often didn't have when I worked on the West Coast in California and Oregon. But the challenge around that is, is it's harder. You don't have as much flexibility in your schedule to add new programs. You're forced to make choices. I'm going to do this program or I'm going to do this program because you're kind of out of staffing and you're kind of out of time in your master's schedule. And I know a number of our principals have faced that, that very, that very challenge and have decided in some instances that world language programming is right for them and in other instances, something else like STEAM, for example, might be a better fit. So the next recommendation is around middle school offerings. And the recommendation from the working group was to condense and enhance our middle school language offerings. So if you just kind of follow this slide across with me for a second, it's probably the easiest way to look at this. So the, the first part of the recommendations has been to phase out introductory courses that we had. So those were courses which were basically like exploratory courses that were not going to lead to any kind of high school credit. So we have in large part phased those courses out over the last several years, but at our middle schools where we still have sixth grade, you'll see that we still do have some of those introductory courses. Largely what we've moved to is this possible two-year sequence to a Level One high school credit in world languages. So basically, what that looks like is you take one year of high school language and you break it in two and you do part A of that in seventh grade and part B of that in eighth grade. And if you complete both of those successfully, then you would be earning a high school credit when you enter the ninth grade. Additionally, just pointing out on the far right, we do have access to full Level One courses beginning in seventh grade for our immersion students. And we have had a couple of schools pilot that. That was, that's one thing that we've had some conversation around this table is to maybe try to have more students do that. I'll tell you, our pilot has had mixed results. We have had a number of students that have had, basically had to expunge their grades because they weren't quite ready for that additional academic challenge as a seventh grade student. So that's been one challenge. And, you know, we have other challenges associated with that as well. We've had at the middle school where we've piloted that, you, as a student, you're losing opportunities to take other courses, right? And our middle schools really do continue to view the, kind of the middle school experience on this middle school model that is about exploration, trying lots of different things and not getting locked into one particular thing too early. So that's been some of the challenge around trying to expand even faster at the middle school level. And next we have some high school recommendations, which were to expand world language access in more of our high schools. So as I said, online campus was one opportunity for us to do that. Online campus world language courses are available to students in grades eight through 12. It provides expanded access for students that might have scheduling conflicts at their base school. The language that they're interested in studying might not be offered at their base school. Maybe they have medical needs, whatever, whatever the case may be, where they require some additional flexibility. The online campus can provide that. So since the working group recommendations came out, we have added Chinese Levels One and Two to our online campus. And we have increased the overall enrollment in our online campus language offerings. And with additional academy staffing, we, or excuse me, additional staffing at the online campus, we could probably add more. At the academy, then, we have added Arabic to our academy course offerings. And we've also expanded the number of students enrolled in Korean and Chinese in our academy courses. And again, I just want to point out that, you know, we have been hoping to be able at some point to add more staffing into our academy programs to be able to provide even more opportunities like this. And the Korean government has provided some opportunities for us, which we really appreciate. And then virtual distance learning, basically this would look like a couple of different things, but what we're trying to explore with this right now is perhaps you might be studying a language at Herndon High School. Maybe you're studying Arabic at Herndon High School. Is there an opportunity for students at Falls Church High School to take the course at the same time? It'd actually be vice versa in that example. But might there be a way to use technology to be able to virtually instruct students in multiple campuses at the same course at the same time? It's basically very similar to what we're doing in our online campus program now and we're exploring additional technology ways to try to do that. And we've been piloting that in a couple areas that are listed here. So moving next then from language offering or recommendations to international learning recommendations, the working group recommended that we expand those types of international learning experiences for our students. And one accomplishment that we'd like to highlight is the development of our Global Classroom Project. And this is a project that's been a collaborative effort between our ESOL office and our curriculum and instruction office, which is why Ms. Klemenko is here, in large part to help talk about that if there are questions. And basically, this particular project gives students the opportunity to partner with students, as I said earlier, from around the world. And they work together on project or problem-based learning opportunities of global importance. And I'm going to give you some examples of what that looks like here in just a second. So we've seen a lot of excitement, a lot of interest in this kind of work. And our first phase of this work, we have developed partnerships with Guatemala, Costa Rica, Peru, Japan, India, Spain, just to name some of the countries that we've been able to work with. So we're very excited about this and we're seeing an impact on students' engagement and their portrait of a graduate skills, particularly when you think about being global and ethical citizens. So I just wanted to share a few examples of some of the projects that are happening that on this slide, you can see some of our students from Braddock Elementary School who were, who were able to visit the embassy in Guatemala, or the Guatemalan Embassy in DC, which has been very, was very exciting for them. And you can see some of the work that they've been focused on. Their project connection is around climate and climate change. On the right-hand side, you see some of our students from Centerville Elementary School that were presenting their research that they did collaboratively with students in Costa Rica, and they were focused on quality education models. Next slide, you can see some of our students at London Town Elementary School and work that they've been doing. And their focus has been on the health of oceans, another global, significant global problem. And then on the right, you see students at Fox Mill Elementary School. They're partnering with students in Japan. And here you see them participating in a Socratic seminar and again, talking about quality education models, similarities and differences of education across different countries. And we've done a lot of professional development to help our teachers launch these programs. And these are just images of some of the professional development experiences where we brought teachers together that have been involved in these projects and they shared their work, presented their work, and we invited schools in that were interested in starting global classroom projects to hear about that and hopefully kind of do, you know, some marketing of these opportunities to be able to expand these programs to other schools. And this was something that we did pass, in the past June. So on the top of this slide, you'll see some of those global connections. And we've been using this framework that is developed by the UN around global goals. So you see some of the topics that students are working on, poverty, hunger issues, healthcare access, access to clean water. So when we're setting up these collaborative partnerships, we're using some of the UN kind of global goals and global challenges to create meaningful, real-world and relevant learning opportunities for students. And, you know, these things are really important in our country, but when you start getting students connected with students in other parts of the world where maybe these are, these issues are even more important and more pertinent, you see how impactful that is to the students here in Fairfax County. So another iteration of this work has been with our ESOL department. And I see that it looks like Mr. Polio is still here, but he's been really instrumental in helping us take the Global Awareness Technology Project for our ESOL students and turn it into something that's much more impactful and meaningful, focused on these global goals and these global projects. Because so many of our students that we have in our ESOL programs are coming from countries that are really impacted by things like access to quality education. As you know, we get students who come here that have had significant interruptions in their education system. So lots of these goals really resonate with our ESOL students. And I think as a result, these learning experiences have been so much more impactful than what we were doing previously. So all of that is to provide a high-level overview for what I think, what I think we need to have in terms of a policy conversation with the board. If we really want to be thinking about expanding world languages, our leadership team probably needs a little bit more direction with some of these questions. So to what extent is expansion of elementary language programs a priority for the board? How much do we need to be focusing on this? How fast do we need to be moving? How explicit and direct do we need to be with schools in terms of implementing new programs? The second question around here or on this slide is to what extent, if there was available funding or funding could be made available, to what extent would the board prioritize it for investments in additional world language programs? And then finally, is this question of language diversity? Because when we did the working group recommendations, it was one of the priorities, recommendations from the working group was to try to diversify the languages that we, that we teach in Fairfax County. Obviously, the, you know, there are a number of strategic or critical languages that the Department of Defense in this country has identified. Arabic, Chinese are just a few. To what extent do we want to prioritize language diversity as opposed to just language expansion? Because as I said, the easiest probably from a budgetary standpoint, opportunity for us to expand, expand our languages at the elementary level is in Spanish in those 27 schools that I had highlighted. To what extent do we want to prioritize that versus perhaps prioritizing more critical languages as identified by the Department of Defense? So those are just three policy questions that I think Dr. Braybrand and myself could probably use a little bit of direction with as we continue our work in this area. So with that, I'm going to pause and turn it over for board discussion and questions.
Okay, thank you. I do see Ms. Strauss would like to say something. Before I do, and I don't know if I'll get to stay till the end, my nephew's here for one more night, so I might go see him. I do want to, want to thank you. You know, as a FLESS teacher, I was very excited to see. I went from development to teaching and used what used to be the Millennium Development Goals, which already provides also resources in the language. And it's all about real-world problem-solving and project-based learning. So I was just so excited to see. I know there are a lot of great things happening. There are a lot of challenges from staffing and other areas that I think we need to discuss. But I do want to just point out the fact that we, you know, over 30 years, we have been the lead. I think maybe we need to figure out where we are headed, but at least in a lot of the change, which is hard and the developing curriculum and thinking around this, I just want to thank the team for everything you have done and to support our schools because it is a challenge, but very important one. So thank you. So I see Ms. Strauss and then Mr. McElveen.
I guess we also want to hear from our distinguished leaders as well. But I guess a couple, and because I do want to hear from Herndon Elementary, is I have, when I talk Because I have, when I talk with my schools that have, particularly have had some longstanding immersion programs, the issue of licensure at the elementary level is so frustrating. I know at Kent Gardens, where we have a very robust French immersion program, they're having a terrible time finding and hiring elementary teachers who are licensed to teach. I don't know how we get around that. And I guess that's my other question with two-way Spanish, where we have many more students, where we can actually do really good, robust, two-way Spanish programs. And I want to hear how we're doing it at Herndon Elementary. But how we also deal with the licensure issue. And I know some of the suggestions have been to try to get more visa opportunities. I don't know how that works long-term, but I know at the elementary level, that is an issue. And then I guess my other question is, if we want to do more target language, Arabic and Chinese, if we did that at the high school level, then we don't have the visa problem. And I don't know if those are languages that are appropriate at the elementary level, or we would be looking more at Arabic and Chinese at the high school level where we don't have the licensure issues. Because those are, I guess, my two questions. How are we going to get past the elementary licensure issue and then the target languages expansion at the high school level where we don't have that problem?
Yeah, so those are great questions. I guess I would say, I think we actually have a hiring challenge at both secondary and elementary. I just think they're a little distinct. At elementary, we've been working very hard advocating at the state for licensure flexibility. We haven't had a lot of success with that. The state did recently approve an endorsement program for teachers, a dual-language endorsement program for teachers, which we think might, you know, for teachers that might be starting programs and entering programs will be great, because they wouldn't have to go back and do a program after they'd already completed one. So I mean, there's a little bit of flexibility there. But we haven't had a lot of luck waiving licensure requirements. We have received authorization from the state also for two-way immersion programming to be recognized as an appropriate and effective model of English language development. So that, again, gives us a little bit of flexibility. But the licensure issue still is a challenge at elementary for us. At the secondary, it's really the same problem, even though you're not looking at dual licensure, still finding somebody who's fluent in Chinese or, you know, whatever language it might be, you know, less commonly taught languages is still a challenge for us right now. So I do think, you know, some school systems, and I've worked in school systems where we did sponsor visas and covered all of that to bring teachers in, I think that's something that we could explore. There's challenges to that. There's costs associated with that. But that's certainly something that we could explore. The licensure problem exists at both levels.
Can we hear from our educators? I would love to hear how we're doing it.
You're right, it is a challenge. And I try to get ahead of it. I've done, I've kind of been creative in several things. One was, there was a former student of mine, when I taught Spanish at South Lakes, who went down to William &amp; Mary. And when I heard, she approached me because she wanted to come back to teach an English classroom, and I convinced her to go into immersion. So you have to be creative. Also, we have some teachers that came from Puerto Rico that are at Herndon currently. And then I've also hired, again, like the first teacher I was talking about, someone coming from Texas who I knew is bilingual, who I hired into a regular classroom, thinking, okay, I might be able to convince her to teach that, you know, to teach immersion later on. Because I would like to expand. I have, right now, a lot of parents, because we are one of those schools that has, we're in-house, we don't do the lottery system. And I've got people on the waiting list, both in the native Spanish and native English speakers. So I would like eventually to expand it if I can.
Right, because I was looking at both Herndon Elementary and Hutchison, both could easily expand two-way immersion.
Right.
Just a few other things I think are interesting to try, but again, they're resource-dependent. You know, similar to what we've done with special ed, with IAs going into licensure, that was something that I've done in a previous school system where we had bilingual instructional assistants, and we supported them in licensure, for teacher licensure. And then also, we've talked about, you know, kind of growing your own teaching force from within the county. We've got a lot of bilingual students here that would be excellent teachers. But again, trying to find some way, not that you would necessarily, I mean, you know, have to commit to paying for all their educational expenses, but, you know, some incentive, some way to get them connected with us so that they would come back to us if they chose to, you know, go into the education profession. So there's things we could try that we haven't, that we haven't done yet.
I personally don't hire anyone, but in our program in LTC, we do have it a little bit easier. We don't need the dual degree like immersion has. They have to have an elementary education degree as well as a language degree to be able to be, able to be accepted into that job. And it's very difficult to find, we have open positions right now. So when we're talking about diversity in the different types of languages we have that we are offering, we're having trouble filling Spanish positions. And how many Spanish speakers do we have in this area? I mean, it's very difficult to find people with both of those degrees, for sure.
And to clarify, for FLESS, LTC, that is not required?
No, we can, it's the same degree that high school, secondary schools would have, just the language degree.
Can I ask you to tell the board, and I don't know what your answer's going to be, but I just want to ask the question?
This is very exciting.
So, do you believe the state should loosen the requirement for this dual certification? I mean, you just gave me the nugget, Spanish, the most common language. We can't even hire or staff that position. Is the license a key to teacher success in the classroom, or is this an artificial entry barrier to the market that is preventing Fairfax from trying to do this internationalization goal?
So personally, this is, I didn't expect this question. I'm very excited now. All right, so I believe personally that they should have elementary education degree, obviously, because that is what they're teaching. But I think as a county, we could implement a sort of test for people that apply. And if they are able to pass it, I don't see a reason why they shouldn't be able to teach. Like, they're being interviewed by native speakers. So if they're able to show in writing and through communication with our staff that's actually checking to see if they know the language, if they're able to do that, then I don't think there should be any more hurdles.
And Sloan, does the state have an alternative path like that where we could do local certification of a teacher, separate from the state one?
No, that was a great answer. I knew it was going to be a great answer.
I didn't, so I'm glad you had faith in it.
It's the position that we've taken for a number of years, and we haven't been successful on, so.
Thank you.
Could I just say that I was at London Town when the state made that requirement, and we lost teachers up to the high school because they didn't have the certification, but they were really good teachers at elementary school. So it really depends on the individual. And then if you look at it from a special ed standpoint, you know, we can hire a special ed teacher with one class as long as, and give them a provisional license, as long as they're in a program. So I'm wondering if they might be able to do that with language.
Not to go too far down this rabbit hole, because we need to circle back and give it another try, particularly now that we have new leadership in Fairfax. But, I mean, we collaborated with GMU. We went down and testified in front of the Board of Education. We got very limited flexibility. So again, that doesn't mean that we don't keep trying. We just need to redouble our efforts, I think, a little bit, so.
Ambience, thank you. So I have Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I just have, I have a few questions. Can you go to slide eight? So one of the questions that's been raised by people in my pyramid are the sequencing or the scaffolding through elementary, middle, and high school. And that sometimes with this mission, we've delivered a language in elementary school that by virtue of the fact of where people are boundaried, the middle school that they may go to then doesn't have what they started with in middle school, or the high school doesn't. And that sometimes they're finding that the exposure of the student for X many years in elementary school, or maybe even into middle school, by the time they get to high school, they are sick of the language. So like, it's like the reverse problem, is that even if it exists, they just don't, they're not interested anymore. So that we've actually built in the scaffold across elementary, middle, and high. And by the time they get there, then the principals are stuck with a position of, okay, well, you told me that I had to fund this, and now nobody's interested in maintaining it, and now I'm struggling to be able to fund it. Could you talk to that issue?
Well, a couple of things I would say. You're definitely right about that issue and that challenge. And there's really two components of it. One, if you don't have the articulation from the elementary or the middle program to the middle and the high school program, right? So way before I ever got here, we had policy in place, and we still have it, that whenever you bring on a language at an elementary school or a middle school, you have to have an articulation agreement for that language to continue as students matriculate through the grade levels. Sometimes we've found that those haven't always been followed. Maybe a new leader comes in.
You mean within a pyramid?
Yeah, yeah, within a pyramid, yeah.
But that doesn't help if it's a split feeder.
Right, right. So that's what I was going to get to. So that's one, that's one of the challenges. But sometimes it's even worse, because sometimes we've had leadership turnover and things have been phased out when we really hadn't an articulation agreement in place, and we've had to go back and try to figure out how to fix that. It doesn't help, as you said, in a split feeder. Then you are also right that we do have the phenomenon of some students, and again, this is why when you look at this two-year sequence in the middle, that we have really recommended not hyper-accelerating students, if you will, and forcing students to start in seventh grade, or I should say, forcing schools to offer Level One in seventh grade for all students. Because we do experience students that have taken a language for a while, and then they want to try something else. They just don't want to do the language anymore. So all of this gets at, you know, for a school principal to staff this, it's a real challenge to balance all of these competing pieces. And if you don't have a critical mass of students, then you are left with smaller class sizes trying to make a difficult decision. Do I continue this language? And this is what we typically do. We continue the language because we've made a commitment to the students who started it that we're going to let them finish it, which then leads to smaller class sizes oftentimes. That's not always the case. You see that more in schools where you have split feeders, or where articulation agreements have kind of been broken over the years.
Okay, so that's the one side. The other side is what you brought up, you presupposed, read my mind, this issue of advancing students down into middle school, and then the presumption that by the time they get to high school, that they will have had access, so that we're eliminating at the high school level, like Level One of a language. Because the presumption is the students actually had access to it in middle school. For example, TJ, I've had a number of TJ students come to me very upset with the master scheduling that's happened there, and that they've had access at the younger grades in some of the middle schools, but not all. And if we don't offer that at the high school level, what you've done is you've blocked that student from access to that language permanently because they didn't have the entry level based to it. So again, it's like almost the flip side of the flip side. What about that one? Well, yes, so without a microphone.
I'm going to pass the microphone, but I think you're identifying challenges that are real challenges that we have right now.
So that's actually kind of where I'm driving to, which is, could we not, this is the perfect thing for a language lab, a real-time online offering, that if you have three students wanting to take, you know, Japanese and/or Latin or something, and there aren't enough in that school, why can we not use a live video feed and have them plugged in to the next building over as an offering?
Yeah, so that really kind of speaks to slide nine and some of the things that we've been trying. And really, I think, we think the best solution to that is our online campus courses, where you're bringing kids from multiple classes into an online environment, or academy courses. Because we feel really strongly that you need to have the face-to-face instruction and the face-to-face interaction, which you get even in our online courses, because they're synchronous. There's asynchronous, but there's also synchronous learning. So, you know, the research on online learning where you don't have that opportunity for practice in a face-to-face environment, the benefits definitely are reduced in that type of environment. So that's really our solution here. And then on the far hand, or the far right-hand side of this slide, we are trying to say, okay, well, maybe there's some ways that we can even use different types of collaborative technology outside of the online campus to bring some of those students together like you just mentioned.
So the last point I'd like to make is, I'm, well, actually, it's twofold. One is, I have schools in my district that are actually upset because they see the erosion of a breadth of foreign languages being replaced by only, by Spanish. And that there is a lack of depth. And they perceive that it is being done for convenience sake, and that it is reducing the rigor and the opportunities for their students, eliminating French, eliminating German, eliminating Latin. And that there are really some very significant concerns that we're just sort of dumbing down the language offerings to fewer choices for our convenience or cost. I don't know that that's true, but I don't have a good answer for them. And that the concern, particularly with Fairfax High School and those who fed in on the issue of Chinese, is that by the time they're getting to high school, they're not wanting to take Chinese. Can we not pursue, I don't know if there are State Department grants for critical languages for, you know, national defense and other issues that could help fund access to a greater breadth of languages? I have expressed in the past a specific concern, and I don't know if we're still getting Chinese language teachers from George Mason, from the Confucius Institute at George Mason, but that's a Red China-funded program. And I'd rather get somebody from our State Department as opposed to, you know, a foreign access power funding our language program. I appreciate Mr. Moon's access to some Korean experience, and that's a little bit different. But specifically with the Chinese, I don't know if we're still working with George Mason. But anything we could do to pursue other grants to expand that breadth is something that, to keep those offerings sitting outside Washington DC, more rather than fewer is better.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, you know, we pursue the grant opportunities that we're aware of. Our Grants Office, I think, does a good job kind of, you know, making us aware of opportunities across the entire instruction, curriculum and instruction department. We could go back and, you know, really maybe take another look and see if we're missing something. We definitely could do that. But the questions you're raising is really that third policy question here that I think is really important, because we do need some direction in terms of how much does the board value some of these critical languages? Because they are harder to staff, they're harder to maintain, and when you see schools going away from them, it's for a financial efficiency reason. They're worried about trying to maintain the staffing, worried about trying to carry the costs of lower class sizes, and that's what's really driving that. So we really do need to know what's our, what's our district's commitment.
Can I just share and inform one thing Sloan just said with even going back a little farther? I know this board has valued multiple languages over the years. I mean, for years. I think that the hard conversation we need to have, the implementation of languages across our system, has been mixed at best. It's faced staffing challenges, the licensure thing, even in the most widespread languages. It's been a little bit more local, school-to-school, and then pyramid baits, articulation agreement, someone leaves, someone doesn't know, makes a decision, doesn't, I mean, it's been communication on our own, on staff's own, on our principals. And then frankly, we've gone through some tough budget times where instead of adding money to make some of this stuff happen, you know, we've cut back or just tried to hold our own. And when principals are trying to have their staffing cut, they're going to look at low-enrollment classes. So that's part of what it's been. I think it's been a perfect storm of some negative pieces that have stopped us from moving forward. I just want to say to you, you know, I'm willing to work with this board and staff to recommit. I think we just need to be honest upfront about what the challenges are and why some... I think we just need to be honest upfront about what the challenges are and why some things aren't happening the way they should be. One of my big beliefs prior to this, and even as I listen more, you hear something two or three times, we got to have a way to get more people in the classroom. I was a principal, if I can't physically get a great teacher in there, I don't want to offer it, because I'm going to hear from those parents every single day. I don't want to have a lousy Chinese teacher or Arabic teacher. I need to have great. This is Fairfax. So we've got to break the barrier. I can't, I'm glad you suggested, and it's exactly where I'm going. If special ed can take one course, and we can let them teach our kids who have some of the greatest needs, that's a whole nother story. And for our language, we got to wait for the whole licensure to happen? I mean, we've got to figure out a way, if we're going to do it, to open the gates to have more people we can put in front of our kids. Then we can make the funding decisions that we need to as a board. I mean, I'm a second language learner. It changed my life to learn another language. It made me a different person. I've heard Mr. Moon talk about it. Many of you, your own jobs have taken you around the world. So I get that it's a game changer. I think it's about how we do it. Something Sloan has shared, and we've talked in LT, is this whole immersion, two-way immersion piece, where we've got schools, and have we, have we supported them enough to go, hey, go make this happen? There may even be pockets, frankly, I don't know if Sloan, we already did, to look like, is the Korean population large enough to have a Korean dual immersion, or are there other schools with some other languages that way? But for some of the strategic languages, I think we've just got to figure out the licensure piece, and then recommit to whether it's a budget priority or not. So I just wanted to say that, even going back a little farther. I know, I know it's been a board value over the years, but with these challenges, where, here's where we stand now. What do we need to do moving forward to carry on, you know, where the board, where the board is on this matter?
Thank you. I have Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the update. It's very helpful. As someone who spent a lot of time on the internationalization working group, it was something that I felt at the time it was important. I continue to think it's important. My, just as a point of background, my husband speaks seven languages, and he speaks seven languages because he's Dutch. And the Dutch believe that you start children at a very early age, and he embarrasses me every time we travel, because he's a sponge, and it's because he was exposed to such an early age. And therefore, he doesn't get embarrassed when he flubs it up. But in reading the report, it struck me that we have taken a haphazard approach to languages and globalization for years. I mean, before the report was done, and I think that's why the emphasis that Mr. McElveen brought to the board when he first came on the board and pushed for this internationalization working group, it was to have a more disciplined strategic approach. And we kind of got there, but not really in the working group, and so it continues to be a challenge. And it also has certain amount of risk if we do it, continue to do it in a haphazard manner, because it, you know, once again, we talk about the value proposition of our schools. People expect a certain level of fidelity when they hear that a program's in place. And so when a program's in place, and then it gets pulled out, or if it's done in not a well-orchestrated manner, then it undermines the credibility. And we have reputational risk for not doing it the best way. So I think it's really important that we revisit the whole plan and come back with one that is more focused and strategic, which also includes a look at the languages we're offering. And I would be very careful in thinking the strategic languages are X, because the strategic languages may be because we've had a large influx of one community or another, but over time, this country has been welcoming of different populations coming in. And so if you'd talked to people in the 70s, they probably would have said the strategic language was Vietnamese. At other times, it might be Korean. At other times, it might be Spanish. At other times, it might be Chinese. And so kind of looking at it more of, are there opportunities for our children to acquire capabilities in a foreign language, and what are the best ways of doing it? And so it may be in a classroom at their local school, or it might be through partnership with some of the other organizations, such as Northern Virginia Community College, George Mason, or Georgetown University, I think's got wonderful programming, as we all know, or even looking at trying to do something with the State Department. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, this concept that you enter school, you start taking one language, and you spend your whole career in Fairfax County with only one language, that is counterintuitive. You know, when I went through, and that's, granted, it's many, many years ago, however, when I went through, we did seventh, eighth, and ninth grade with one language, and then we were given the opportunity to continue on with that language, or possibly take a different language. And so we do want, I know we have that opportunity, but we don't necessarily have the mindset. And so part of it is a mindset of being able to, you know, to pick up other languages. The other part of that is the, I'm going to go back to our systematic implementation. We are right outside of Washington DC. We need to be much more strategic in our partnerships with the embassies in Washington, and with the international organizations, because each one of those would be excellent partners for our individual schools. And so we should be looking at it more from the standpoint of exposure to students about the international world in which we live. Now I want to talk a little bit about the academies. It's great we have two language academies. I can promise you that you do not have people from my area of the county going to those academies, because they are just bloody too far away. And so once again, when I talk about a plan, the plan should include access. And so the strategic location. You know, our health sciences academies, we have one on my side, and then we have another one in Falls Church. That actually provides a lot more access than if you put two over on the western side of the county. Mr., Dr. Presidio, you mentioned kids asking for expunging grades, because they took seventh grade language and asked for it to be expunged, because they didn't do as well. And that would maybe be an impediment to offering seventh grade language. I was a little surprised at that, because do we know, we do the same thing with algebra, we do the same thing with geometry. Have we done an assessment about whether or not it's a higher percentage of kids that take seventh grade language and ask for it to be expunged versus kids that take seventh grade algebra?
I was just previewing a presentation that's going to come to the board in September, which is our High School Pathways presentation, which was previously scheduled to happen today as well, but was moved off until September. And one of the recommendations, well, not recommendations, one of the requests from this board was for our High School Pathways team to consider expanding the pilot, making level-one credit more available at seventh grade. And what we're finding, when we look at the feedback from principals and teachers in those schools, is a high percentage and a high number of students that are not, you know, realizing the kind of success that we had hoped in expunging grades. Off the top of my head, I don't know if that's more or less than algebra. That's something we can certainly look at as a next step, though.
Okay, I think that would be very helpful. And then in the report, just for clarification, there are two things I wanted. We see that the leader, the language through content is being phased out at at least two schools in the Lee District that feed into high schools in the Mount Vernon District, and that's Groveton and Rose Hill. And I was wondering if we actually know why those were being phased out. And then lastly, it also says that we're going to be rolling out as a pilot, the language through content using math and science at two middle schools for pilots. Can you tell us which two middle schools that is, those are?
That's, those two schools are Glasgow and Poe. But to your previous question about why are those schools phasing out, those two schools phasing out programs, I don't know. Dr. Jones, do you know? Do you want to, if you do, I'd invite you up. If you don't, we'll do that as a next step. It sounds like staffing challenges there, but we can, we can find more information on those two schools specifically.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Ms. McLaughlin and then Ms. Evans.
Well, I certainly had my share of input today at the work session, so I'll try to make up for it by being brief on, on this topic. I would say, at a very macro level, I appreciate what others have said, that we know the way that the individual brain works, especially at the child level. You know, the earlier you have exposure to languages. And one statistic I frequently hear is that by age seven, if you haven't really provided that exposure, then you start to, you know, lose that extreme benefit of becoming bilingual, trilingual, or I don't even know how we would describe your husband. I don't know what that's number is when you say seven or more. But so at that level, without question, I think it is something that, when we talk about, is it?
Setling.
Setling, yeah, multilingual. I think it certainly makes for a premier school system, and it is certainly one that we know has distinguished FCPS for now almost three decades. So I'm a firm believer in it. I also think that, Dr. Braybrand, you framed it very well, which is what makes this conversation very difficult, which is, so how do we go about funding this? How do we also go about getting the premier teachers in the classroom for it? So I think I'm in line with all of my colleagues, which is, I support further work on this, absolutely. I have a son who's interested in doing intelligence work, and he's now going to be a senior in college. And I think about if we were doing more robust foreign language study, especially in, and Mr. McElveen, thank you for sharing your questions with your colleagues, all of us. I think it was last night, you sent it incredible, robust set of questions surrounding internationalization and world languages. But there are very high-demand, unique foreign languages that I don't think we're doing right now. But if we helped expose our students to it, then where FCPS graduates could go, not only for college and career, would be phenomenal. And a lot of it has to do with exposure, exposure, exposure. So introducing that, I mean, there's languages that I, frankly, growing up in the 80s, I did not ever know about, and I've come to learn, living in an international city like DC. So long and short is, I really appreciate today's presentation, our staff who came and joined us from Herndon, and, oh, one of mine, Terra Center Elementary. So it's lovely to have you both here with us. And, you know, Ryan, with 12 of us on the board, I think we are at our best when we each find our areas of passion, and then we can put some concentrated time and attention to it. And I've so relied on and appreciated your expertise in this area. It's one that I wholeheartedly believe in. I think we have to just, really do have that important conversation with our community, and maybe, again, it's looking at, with limited resources, how can we be most effective with our foreign language? And I just, I felt like a lot was discussed here today that makes me excited for us doing the best we can with the limited staffing we've got. But it's something like Field of Dreams. You know, if you build it, they'll come. So if we don't offer it, we're not going to develop that, not only students knowing it, but future teachers who can teach it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, and is there anyone else? Okay, Ms. Kizgamar, then I think Mr. McElveen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the presentation, and I only have a few questions. The two-way immersion, we've, for a long time, talked about what a great opportunity that is, and the cost is so low. And so it's, it's just unfortunate that it seems like where the potential is the greatest, there's also higher barriers, it seems. And a number of those schools that have the potential for two-way immersion are my schools, you know, with high Spanish-speaking populations. So I'm not sure what is to be done about it, but the idea of, rather than it just being a school-based program, would it be easier or harder to make it a county-wide lottery program, where we could have two-way immersion? I know we have only a couple of the county-wide lottery programs, but is there potential? I'm thinking, in particular, at schools, that you'd have to have room for it. But when I, excuse me, when I look at the list in, in Mason District, I look at Wayanoke, for example, that's got a very high Spanish-speaking number, and they actually do have room there now for more students. What would be the potential for making it a county-wide lottery, two-way immersion?
Well, there's a lot of work, additional work, not just for central staff, but for school-based staff and a lottery program. And that's not to say that we shouldn't do lottery programs in some instances. But where we've already got the composition within that school to be able to deliver it, it's a lot more efficient to be able to do it as a school-based program, as opposed to a lottery program.
I'm just thinking that it might have, there might be more buy-in if it were, I understand that it would be easier to do it just school-based, but if the challenge is that the schools have other priorities, it sounds like that's what...
Well, multiple challenges, and that's one of them, yeah.
That they, right. So I would think that that might be another opportunity. I, you actually answered one of the questions I was going to ask, which was about Arabic at Glen Forest, because I was wondering, and I guess we're pretty close, we're 27%.
Right.
So whenever I go to the mosque over there, that's usually the top question I, or one of the top questions I get, where can my child go to get Arabic? And of course, we've got two, you know, elementary schools where they can go.
See, that would be, that would be an example of a school that's really close, where maybe what we would do would be to do a school-based program, and if you can't fill the slots, then you open them up to other students outside of the school. We did that at Cole and Powell with Korean. It was quite a lot of work, but I think we've, you know, every year, been able to, you know, find more and more families that are interested in the program.
So unfortunately, Glen Forest is one that, where we have more than 1,000 students there now, and we're thinking about how to, actually, we're, we may initiate a boundary study there sometime soon, because we have so many students, unlike Wayanoke, which has, has spaces. So, but I think maybe a school base is something that we might want to talk with the principal about over there, if that's something of interest. And, and maybe down the road, when their, their population isn't as high, to go to some sort of a place where they, they could fill in. On the accomplishments, those are, those are excellent accomplishments. I think you might have added that we, we have, we added Vietnamese at the, at Falls Church High School. I believe we're still the only one in the state of Virginia that has the Vietnamese language program. So
That's correct.
I always like to tout that as, as one of, one of our, our great accomplishments. Earlier, we had gotten a report from the superintendent about high school language programs, where some of the programs were being cut back at the high schools. And I did look, I don't, I wasn't able to find it immediately, but I do think that that's another area where we have to be thinking about equity, and making sure that, that there's equity across our, our offerings, that it's not that some high schools have eight languages and others have three. So that, that is something that I think we need to look at in the future. And since Falls Church was one with, with the most, I think it had either the most or almost the most. I can't complain about it for my, my district, but I just think overall, we need to be sure that it's not a matter of where you go to high school, that you, you have the availability. Thank you.
Okay, Diane had to leave, so I'm going to...
Okay, Diane had to leave, so I'm gonna take over from here. We have Karen Kizgimara, Ryan Illyong, and Tammy.
I was like, who's over there? Anyway, I, I do agree with my colleagues. I remember the struggle with my, my boys when they were young, probably my youngest was, 10 years ago, we were looking for programs, and we simply would have to send them out of our neighborhood. They, it just wasn't, wasn't available except for the FLEX, which is essentially, you know, a club, in, in my opinion. And so my, my question is, to what extent have we kind of taken a step back and looked at other districts that have been more successful? Because I do think that, to some extent, not for lack of trying, we haven't been able to be as effective in this area as we would like. I remember going to some Arlington schools, and I think that they have, it seems like they have incorporated some of these language studies just in their everyday, just as they move along. Their, their kids are learning in different, in Spanish, I remember, I, I don't recall a different language, but it's a part of their everyday. And so to what extent have we looked at that? Because I'm, at this point, I would like to see various proposals or plans of kind of how to go forward more effectively than we have in the past. I, quite frankly, as a parent, was frustrated trying to figure out how to, how to get my boys exposed to that in those crucial years, because you know, when they're young, that's when it's most beneficial. And, you know, I think I succumbed to having Spanish night at home and, you know, figuring out what we could do. But I, I, I think that that's not who we are as FCPS, that we'd like to, to do something more effective. So I guess my first question is, how much have we kind of studied this surrounding areas or other communities that have been more successful?
I, I'd caution saying, we're less successful than other communities. I, I do think we're quite successful with the programs that we have. You look at how students perform that come out of our programs, and they perform very highly. So I, I'd be a little careful with that. Now, that being said, there's lots of different models, right? We have several models here, there are other models. We have looked at national research on different models, we've looked at international research on different models. There are diff, there are different approaches that we could take. But in this presentation, I was trying to highlight some of the barriers and challenges, which are real, around finding licensed staff, around competing priorities. And, you know, the, the funding is an issue when we talk about expanding programs, and, you know, I just want to be real transparent and direct about that. So what I was trying to highlight in this presentation were some things that maybe we could focus on that would be more cost-effective, like the two-way immersion schools, right? So we've got a lot of possibility for expansion there in those 27 schools in a relatively cost-effective way, because you don't have to hire an additional teacher. Now, that being said, that doesn't get at our diversity of language program either, those are primarily in Spanish. So we have to square the circle a little bit with how much of a priority is expansion in world language programs for the board. I think we all support them, but there are, I mean, this is the whole strategic planning conversation that we were having at the beginning of the day, there's only so many things that we can ask schools to do at one time, right? And if, if this is going to be a priority for us, I think we're going to have to be more direct than we've been, and that's the leadership team and the school board, because what, the approach that we have taken in Fairfax is promoting, encouraging, but not requiring schools to start these programs. So we, every school that's eligible on that list of 27 schools, we've invited them into meetings, we've invited them out to look at immersion programs, we've encouraged them to strongly consider adding programs. And there's some legitimate reasons, as I shared, why they were reluctant to do so. So it's important to understand from a principal and a management standpoint, realistic challenges that they're having. If this is a policy priority, then the leadership team is going to need to think differently about what languages, what schools, and, and taking a, a more direct and different approach than what we've taken in the past.
I get, I get what you're saying about, you know, we have been successful in some areas, but I'm looking at it more from an access, right? I don't think that it's been broadly accessible, and I can say my family has experienced that, and in that way, that's where I'm talking about.
Right, right.
How I'm kind of defining success.
We definitely can do a lot better. I'm not saying we're where we want to be. I was just saying, I'd be careful about comparing other districts as more successful than Fairfax.
Well, I, my pri, my concerns would be, how effective are we in terms of making it accessible? Because perhaps the problem is, you know, we're saying, we're offering, but it's not happening, which, does that end up meaning, does that end up meaning that it's available in some areas and not at others? Does it then become an equity issue that Lee District and Mount Vernon don't necessarily have some of these programs, but the other ones that have much more support do? That is of concern to me. And that is the reason that I started where I started, not to say that we haven't had success. The kids who are, get these programs do excellently, our, our children do well with support. But it looks like there are chunks of kids that aren't getting it.
That don't have the same.
And that's the concern that I have.
Right, and that's a very legitimate concern.
So that's the reason I'm, I mean, so how, you know, other than the Spanish, and how we can, or I guess we can look at different communities. I was looking for a plan that we can say, we're not leaving out entire regions, we're not leaving it up to.
And that's what I was saying, it would take, it would take a different kind of leadership philosophy than what we've brought at this in the past, which has been to try to work with schools. And, and again, when, when we've looked at expansion, we've looked at where we have areas of underrepresentation. We look at where do we have language diversity in which parts of the region? So, you know, where do we have Spanish programs? Where do we have French programs, right? Looking at the different languages, we've considered that. All I was trying to say is, we haven't taken, as a leadership team or as a board, the approach of saying, we're going to put this program in this school. And there's reasons why we haven't done that. One of the really legitimate reasons is we want, our approach has been, we want the community to help select the language. So what language do they value most in the community? So when we've gotten a little bit away from, from that in the past, and maybe we've had a principal say, this language is really important for my students to learn, and then they've, and we haven't had this happen too much, but they go forward without maybe the robust kind of community engagement that we'd like to see, we haven't necessarily had the selection of the language that the community valued as much maybe as the system leadership valued.
But my guess is, these areas, for example, Lee and Mount Vernon, where we're not having some, access to some of these things, that's not the situation that happened, unless, I could be wrong.
It is, it is largely.
And so that's, that's my, because that then becomes, you know, what you get as an education depends on your zip code and that sort of thing, which is hopefully not, not what we intended, correct?
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to.
That is my concern. But I think I made that point. But, but for example, I know Arabic was removed recently from Falls Church High School and it went to the academy. My concern is, how many of those academies are available? And are they, you know, provided throughout all the regions so that every child in Fairfax County has equal access to those? I mean, fundamentally, my concern is, who has equal access to the programs that we do have? I would like to see more consistency in the offerings. If, if it is important that, or a program is more successful, and this is why I started out by asking for a plan, if you're saying to us, the, the way to make a program successful is to go to the community first, engage them in the, in that conversation, and then go forward, then I think that that's important, that we identify that as part of how we're going to go forward, because we could continue to kind of.
I'm, I'm agreeing with everything that you're saying. I, I think the opportunity and the access issues are critically important. I was just trying to give you a little bit of the context and the background of about why we are where we are and some of the things that we've tried, and, and to say that if we're going to be more successful, I think it's going to take a different approach, as you said, and others have said, Karen Corbett Sanders mentioned this as well, that maybe we need a more strategic plan around languages. But that's going to require, coming back to some of these board priorities, and, and it will require some additional funding to put those programs in. I mean, to put new courses of study into an academy program is going to require more staffing, right? Doesn't mean that the staffing couldn't come from somewhere else, maybe we stopped doing something that we're doing now, but it would require new funding for that particular program. So we just haven't, we haven't taken that direct of an approach.
Right, and I guess what I'm looking for, and that's why I started with, it would be nice to have a plan. And you eventually gave me, well, this is where we've been successful. I think that's, as a board, is what we need to hear, so that then we can say, we can get behind these things. And so that was my point.
I, I think part of this is, what are our values now? The system has valued in the past, community input. Community input often has been traditional, the traditional big four, five languages, not the more strategic languages, if you will. We've also, we, we've had some communities, and again, I don't even remember all the details, Italian, we had where in, was it Frost or?
Ant, Mantua.
Mantua. We had Chinese at Mount Vernon Woods, then accreditation, and when you talk to the community there, they're like, look, half our kids are Spanish, we want Spanish, we want to double down and, and use Spanish for math and science. We haven't, what are our values, right? We want to, I think this is what, and I'm new, and I want to hear it for the first time, I'm not Jack, I'm not Karen, I'm Scott, and I'm ready to figure out what the plan is, but what are the values? Is it, our best programs are immersion programs. Let's just call it like it is. There's a waiting list anywhere to get in these, they're 30 years old, people love them. Our easiest way to do more immersion programs is to do Spanish immersion, two-way immersion, 27 schools. But that doesn't get at, right? That, that's high quality, but it's not a great diversity of courses. A great diversity of courses is probably going to require a more intentionality to say, are we going to only have it in certain pyramids? Are we going to have it across the county? And to do, do it across the county at all those, all those languages at scale is going to be a lot more money. In addition to trying to get the staffing, we'd probably honestly have to get into the visa thing of trying to bring people from other countries over here to teach those languages, because the state apparatus, or really, and I'm good at this, I think, going to the state and going, look, I'm not waiting anymore, 20 years of talking about it, if we can do it for special ed kids, we can do it for language, give us the flexibility to do the hiring. I think it's knowing what, what value is most important. For kids to get a high-quality immersion experience in any language, to get a high-quality immersion experience in certain languages. The, the FTE, which was formerly FLEX, principals see it as, it's an hour, hour and a half, it's kind of nice, but I'm not going to cut my band program, chorus program, and art, I'm just saying, and they're not here, and maybe they'd say differently, but I'm not going to cut that program for foreign language, right? That, that, that bread and butter's been here 50 years. So you can give me that, but you got to give me the staffing. And I think that's part of where Ryan and some others is, promises were made, oh, we got enough staffing, we can do it all. One little nugget I want to give you all as board members, having left and come back, when you've come from a different system, because I think maybe leadership before said, we gave you more staffing, you could make it work, but, and, and Sloan sort of alluded to it, if you start to pull people back from full-time, like in Lynchburg, we had a lot of point, hey, I had teachers going, I had PE teachers, art teachers going to four schools. They didn't like it, and many of them said, Scott, we're leaving, because I don't want to be at four schools. We don't do that in Fairfax. You're a full-time art teacher, you're a full-time band. Sometimes we've had people at two schools, point five and point five, but we're not sending people to three or four schools when we do our fine arts and course. So, oh, if you, when you talk to our numbers people, oh, if you actually trimmed a point three here, a point four, but many don't want to do that to their embedded programs and tell that teacher, oh, you're going to have to go over to this school for a couple hours each day. One, the community doesn't want, and two, the principal doesn't want to get that person out of their school, and the third is that person themselves would rather stay embedded in one or two schools. So it's, it's almost like playing chess at four levels with foreign language a little bit. What are the core values that we most want from the board, right? When Jack was here, I sat on LT, it was, oh, we want every kid to have a second language experience. Or at least that's what I heard when I just sat. Well, a second language experience doesn't mean X number of languages. I think we've got to drill down and decide what the specific outcome is, to have folks with that second language experience, to have multiple second language experiences, and it needs to be provided equitably across the division. I, I think that's the part of the conversation that will help drive us to, and then it's got to be, look, this is a system value, and it's going to happen. Our overall approach in Fairfax has been, just like you asked me in the interview, principal autonomy, well, what do you think? What language? Go talk to your board and different principals, and then a principal leaves two years later and go, hmm, I don't think I like French now, I want to do this. So we've had that back-and-forth interplay that we really have tried to keep from you guys, but that's been, the department's wanting this, the principal wants that, and we've defaulted to the principal most of the time on some of these decisions. Even as they've started to cut back, and you're sending me the emails like, hey, they don't call me to decide when they're going to cut classes. Frankly, they don't call me when they're going to add sections either. And I didn't call, I didn't call Dan or Jack when I was a principal, I'm like, oh, I want to do this. So on some of these, it's, under what parameter will we reintroduce this issue of second language, or third language, or multi-language acquisition? And I think the better we define the terms around the board table, the better we'll, the better plan we'll have. We can bring you a plan, but we have to decide if it's in alignment with the core values that the board has. And maybe that's what we need to do, is bring you a choice of plans, and then let you say, this is the closest plan to what our values is. And I think Sloan, maybe that's where, I've been listening today, is where we're going to probably need to go with you guys, and you'll go, you know what, I'll take this one. And then it's implemented with fidelity, instead of a promise that we're going to be able to do everything all of you say, then it doesn't happen, and you're, you're rightfully frustrated.
So if I could just respond to that really, really quick, that's okay, you can borrow some time. No, um, no, for me, access is, is one of my top priorities, but also having that community engagement piece, because again, this goes into my drum that I beat about communication, the community know, needs to understand where the difficulties are, and they need to feel like they are a part of discussing it, that's transparency, that's them understanding, well, I might not have the language that I want, but this is how that happened. So for me, those are the two top priorities, that we have access, parentheses, equity, and also public discussion to, so that people can really understand how we got where we are.
Okay, thank you. Just a time check, it is eight minutes until seven o'clock, and we have three board members who still would like to speak, Ryan Illyong and Tammy. Ryan, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So just to begin with a question, does anyone know what the three most studied non-English languages are in the US? Spanish, French, and what's number three? American Sign Language. And so whatever I say today is not to downplay those languages, but rather to say that our language choices in FCPS and around the country do not reflect the needs and realities of our world. For example, 6% of the world speaks Spanish, 3% speaks French, and 16% of the world speaks Chinese. And those of us in K to 12 school systems are the root of this problem, because we are the pipeline that feeds university language programs, and so in this issue, the buck stops with us. As Scott has alluded to, in 2006, the board committed to the student achievement goals, which included having all students graduate proficient in two languages. And in 2014, 15, this board called for the rollout of LTC to all elementary schools as part of the Full Day Monday expansion. And now, 12 years after the SAGs, and four years after the full implementation of LTC programs, the progress the system has made has been disappointing, to say the least. Over the past four years, I, as one board member, have been willing to give staff the benefit of the doubt as the LTC program and model was developed and rolled out across the district. But what we see from this report is that we will end up with only about 10 more schools with LTC after the additions and subtractions as we had in 2014. Now, under Jack, Jack Dale, we made significant progress in this area. Under Karen, we had a bump of progress in 2014, and then we flatlined. And under Scott's tenure, when you include the subtractions and additions, we actually have had a decline. And as Scott knows, I met with him during his first month here, and he knows that this is a priority of mine. And I think the importance of world language instruction and expansion has been clearly outlined in this strategic plan. And frankly, over the last few years, it seems like there has been a lack of focus, as Karen said, at the central level. So as a result of the update we received here today, and, and as a result of what Scott is saying, I, I have two requests, which we can include in next steps or discuss further. And the first would be that, in the model of the Equity Officer position, I believe we need to elevate someone who oversees and focuses on internationalization efforts to the leadership team, so that that person is at least in the table. in these conversations, empowered to make progress in these areas. We need to make the international perspective strategically infused into everything we do. And whether that person is Sloan or someone else, I don't care. But I want to see that internationalization voice as part of everything we do. And number two, I also believe that because of the lack of progress in this area, and based on Scott's comments, we need to potentially reconvene the Internationalization Working Group to create a district-wide strategy for implementing these programs equitably throughout the county, and truly infusing this work in everything we do. So moving on to questions, I did send a long list of questions yesterday, and I understand staff is not necessarily ready to answer all of them. But I do want to pull out some of these and kind of give staff an opportunity to respond in public, at least to some of these. So I mean, to, to begin with, I think the presentation makes it clear that we have an imbalance in language offerings throughout FCPS. So, and we've discussed this a little bit, but how does central staff envision their role in terms of leadership on language choices throughout the division? Do you see it better for the board and central staff to designate languages of focus? Or do you think the decision should be entirely left to individual schools, as is currently the case? And as part of that, do you think we should be promoting and prioritizing critical languages as opposed to more traditional language offerings?
So, you know, I've been here since 11, sitting up here with you all. So I, I will follow up in more detail on all of these when I can maybe give it a little bit more thought in a more.
Coherent.
Yeah, a little bit more coherent response. I, I would say my gut reaction on this is it's probably a balanced approach. The community involvement in selecting a language is important. But if we're, if, if it's a value, kind of going back to what Dr. Braybrand said, if language diversity is a value for our board, and our leadership team knows that, then we're going to need to be more direct. So if equity of access to programs is a value for us, then we're going to need to be more direct. And I've known Teresa for a long time. She was the assistant principal at my kid's school, and still their favorite administrator as they go on to sixth grade into third grade. But maybe we would go to Teresa, if she didn't have a program, and say, you know, we're expanding language programming. Across the division, we think your school is a great candidate, and here are the three choices. And now we're going to engage your community around these three choices to see what the, the best pick would be. So I think it's probably a balance. But if, if it's a value to expand programs, if it's a value to have language diversity, then the leadership team can create a, a plan that will help us move in that direction.
Okay, and then next, in terms of the Full Day Monday expansion, the board, at the time, you know, as, as Kathy Smith and God is my witnesses, we received assurances that LTC would be expanded within the funding that was provided for Full Day Mondays. So I guess, can you explain, what, if, if you, if you can, what happened with that? Because as I recall, it was part of, the LTC model paired with STEAM was going to be incorporated into all schools as part of the staffing that was provided.
So I think you're right, that the board definitely was given the impression, and some individual board members were given the assurance that we would have adequate staffing to be able to expand our programs. What I can say is, I think we were incorrect about those staffing assumptions and those staffing formulas at the time. As soon as they were developed, I can tell you that Instructional Services started looking at the amount of additional staffing that schools were going to get. And we didn't feel that it was going to be sufficient. And it has proven to not be sufficient. So as Dr. Braybrand has already said, if you just look at the formula itself, right? And just plug it in, in, in the abstract in a vacuum, you can, you can make it work. But the reality in Fairfax is, you're not going to reduce a full-time teacher to a .8 position, and somebody else who's .5 to a .3, to bring on a new .5 position. That is just not a, a leadership or management decision that any principal is going to make. It's difficult for them to make that if they have an open .5 position, right? So I, I think for us to be able to expand the LTC program, it is going to take additional costing to figure out, how would we adjust the formula? We've gone through multiple versions of that, I can tell you, since, since I brought this up, after Full Day Monday expansion. But we need to do it again, because now we have new leadership in financial services. I went through that fire drill with Ms. Quinn, then I went through it again with Ms. Michael. And now we need to go through it again with Ms. Burden. And we need to bring back what the true cost of the staffing formula would be if we were going to expand programs in a way that wouldn't require schools to make some of those difficult decisions.
I appreciate that, because I thought I was going crazy and remembering it how I did. So I, I appreciate the, you know, the explanation. As part of that, and I, and Eileen, I'll send you some next steps. But I would like for, for staff to conceive of the costs and an implementation plan for, to get us to all 140 elementary schools, in terms of LTCs, as was originally promised. And I would also like, and this is in the, in the interest of equity, is for a map of language oper, language offerings around the county, like we have done with other things, coded by the languages offered, not only for the board's use, but also for the public. So if they're looking for, where's the nearest Korean program or whatever, they can easily determine that. And also, you know, in terms of what Elizabeth was saying, it'd be, I would like a list of where the vertical articulation has been completed, you know, as part of the original recommendation of the plan. I do want to turn briefly to the internationalization section of this, and could have lots of questions on this. But more specifically, I'm interested in, as you saw from my questions, in the Education First partnership. You know, the, the numbers provided, this, this program seems to benefit a very small number of students. And if we want to embed, you know, the, the foreign study and study abroad options in our community, I don't think this is necessarily the model. And, you know, as I've described, this was definitely a Jack Dale special. And we really didn't, the board has never really been, been engaged on that. So, you know, I asked more specific questions about who's participate in trips and things like that. But do you have any, do you have any sense? And I, I also asked about budget expenses as well, but just a sense about this program and its future.
Yeah, I can definitely talk about it briefly, because we started that my first year here. And I think it was a program that has had potential and has potential. I'll respond more fully in writing, and we'll obviously share that with the full board. But I would say during my first year here, Jack Dale was very interested in getting students opportunities to actually go and study and learn in other countries, right? And one strategy to do that, he felt, was working with EF, because EF has such a robust infrastructure in terms of the relationships that they have around the world with tourism industry, you know, hotels, lots of opportunities to organize and reduce costs. So we entered into MOA, I believe, not an MOU, that said that we would try to work with Education First to customize some experiences for Fairfax, so that we would provide more educational benefit than just an EF trip that you might find, you know, advertised in any high school world language course in, in the country, right? And, and we did do that, and we identified some teachers, biology teachers, environmental studies teachers, history, social studies teachers, that were interested in maybe trying to develop something in a particular country, working with EF. So what EF did then was try to arrange the travel logistics and drive down the cost as much as possible, so that it would be as affordable as possible for students. Anybody who knows anything, though, about these trips knows that they are still very costly to attend. But one of the things that I liked about the MOA with Education First was that for a certain number of paying students, they would scholarship in other students. So we had a few of those trips that have happened, but we haven't had very many. When Jack left, that was something that, you know, it kind of started to fizzle out, because he was the one who had the relationship, who had initiated, you know, trying to develop something with them in the first place.
Yeah, thank you for that, and we'll hear more later. But, you know, I would offer that, and this is not to volunteer him, but I'm sure Mr. Moon could easily lead a trip to Korea that would be inexpensive, just as I could lead one to China, you know, and that would be a great opportunity for our students, but.
We would love, we would love to do that.
But I mean, probably far better than what EF could provide. But I think we have options in our system that we aren't exploring. And so just finally, I, I think that's it for the questions. But, but I would like, you know, also some more details on, in particular, international service projects that, that we might be spending money on, because I think we certainly have enough service, service projects that can be done here at home. I don't want to be spending, or our families to be spending money to go abroad to do those kind of things. And then it would also be great to have, and this is something we asked for originally in this, the original working group, is to be able to track all the global engagements we have throughout the system. And then finally, I would just add that, you know, we do, as part of the original report, we did add an internationalization coordinator position. I, I do think this person, because we do already have this position, this person needs to be empowered to do more. Whether we have the right person in that role, I don't know, for, for what we're looking at doing system-wide. But I think that's something that needs more explanation, exploration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Illyon, then Tammy.
Thank you, thank you for asking a lot of good questions, Mr. McElvin. And also, you know, thank you for making a special trip back from China to us for this. I was, I was quite impressed that you would just come back for one work session and go back to China. That's 14 hours flight. Each way is a, one way is a 14 hours. So, so that is amazing, that's a dedication. And that also shows how much you care about this particular issue, you know, as well. I, I share your, you know, passion. I also share your frustration as well. I think we, you know, I think some board members in good intent, you know, that, in good faith, and with a good intent, talked about, we need to develop more plans. I don't know whether more plans is what you need. It's, I think it's more actions, actual taking actions is needed. We've had some of these for many, many years. I, I missed very beginning part of your questions, because I had to step outside. So I don't know whether you talked about this, our strategic plan, existing current strategic plan, IGNITE. That's what we are working on at the present time, unless we modify that, that's the plan we have. You look at that, what you have, it, it's a page, page 19 of IGNITE. It talks about, on the strategy, over our strategy number four, students will be fluent in two or more languages, and it has a timeline. In 2017, 2018, we just passed that. Was supposed to have implemented, implemented, expanding language programs to include immersion and language through content. It's a, it's a green dot, green round dot right there. That was supposed to be under our current superintendent, because, I know, that was, might, might be unfair to you, but that's why you inherited, and board hasn't told you otherwise. So that's your, that's our system strategic plan, and we have a green light. I don't think we, we deserve that green light for 2017 to 2018. So that's where my frustration is, as a one board member, that I tried hard, tried hard for many years, as much as possible, you know, to talk with the embassy of, Korean embassy officials, just individual capacity to back for more funding, back for more funding, because we knew that just we were not putting in funding ourselves. And, and some of the things, some of the, you might consider this a very minute detail. And, and Dr. Posey, and some other staff, and maybe even including Dr. in a program, I say, I know you, you know, I heard you say this before, and I, I understand what you are saying. But for my colleagues' benefit, and for the public, I want to say this, we need to be more intentional about funding this. Without funding, without being intentional, it's not going to go anywhere. You wait for another 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, will be, will not have improved much. So no more just a planning, spending more time, another year or two is a planning. It's a time to take actions, folks. I'm going to give a little detailed stuff, you know, for example, I appreciate, you know, a superintendent, and Dr. Posey, and Dr. Duran, he's not here. He had to, for the, understand that, you know, providing, you know, additional halftime position for Korean language, and another halftime position for Arabic language at Fairfax Academy. Because I was appalled when I heard that there has been waitlist at the Fairfax Academy for the Korean language for many years, but we were not accommodating those students, because we basically said, we only going to have one teacher. That's it, one teacher, that's going to drive, that's the limit, one teacher. So it's not going to grow, one teacher, that's it. I said, how is it that, there's a demand, there's a demand. Students want to take this academy, students even want to travel from far, want to take the course, but we are not accommodating, because we don't want to put additional resources. That is the state of our commitment to these audible goals of, you know, our students will be becoming fluent in two or more languages. So, so, you know, since I'm, I'm, since I brought the Korean language as an example. For example, Korean language, many of the students at the Fairfax Academy, they are heritage speakers. Many of them have gone to their weekend language schools for many years when they were younger, younger. But they want to just hone in, they want to just fine-tune their languages. They got many students like that, especially in the western part. I know Ms. Corvusanders talked about, why does it have to be just western part? For me, Fairfax Academy and Marshall, it's not necessarily in western part. You look at the map, it's a more of a central, they are more of a central in Fairfax County. I understand. So we have to be equitable in where the, you know, you know, programs location might be. At the same time, you also need to see what the demand is, what the demand is at the same time. So for the Korean language, for example, again, if we have another location, another location in western part of the county, many of the students who are unable to come to Fairfax Academy, they will go there. And many of the students who waste their time on roads coming to Fairfax Academy, they will go there. But this is something for you to think about. Another, another thing that I think hasn't been mentioned thus far, unless Mr. McElvin mentioned it while I was absent from room, is about, you know, supporting our educators for international experience. You know, there are some programs that I've been able to arrange for our educators to go to Korea, teachers. And every time I have to back for funding from Korean school districts, Korean government, because we have no budget, we have nothing, we will do exchange mutually beneficial, but we're not going to spend a dime. That's been our approach, and that's been my approach, because I didn't have money. Whenever, you know, if somebody approaches me for the program, I say, as long as you fund 100%, we'll participate. Some of the school districts get offended, believe it or not, that we taking that approach, that you think that's a mutually beneficial, but we pay 100% of the cost. So we have to be intentional, more intentional. We just cannot say that, you know what? We are Americans, we are the United States of America, Fairfax County, the greatest school district in the entire world. So you want other program with us, exchange program with us? You come to us, that's okay, you pay for it, we'll go, you pay for it. That's the attitude that approach we've been taking. And I've been shamelessly, I've been doing that for close to 20 years. And I don't want to continue doing that, then we need to be more intentional about supporting our educator, not just the students, educators who has to have that experience. And we need to provide the reasonable amount of funding for that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Taranet Kofax.
Yes, I appreciate, I appreciate your passion, Mr. Moon. I, my questions actually are, were ones that Ryan had. First of all, Ryan, you weren't crazy. Full day kindergarten was supposed to, Full Day Mondays were supposed to be enacted, and it was supposed to be absolutely this time every elementary school. I'm not exactly sure how many of my elementary schools don't have any language programming, but there's several of them. And so I need to get that map. I, I know a couple off the top of my head, but I think it's probably worse than I think. And the cost to bring this all to school is, is very important. I started this by saying, I really appreciate your passion, Mr. Moon, and Ryan's passion. But it is just like anything else, there is a cost benefit, the funding, funding, funding. Where is it going to come from, and where are our priorities? I think before we start talking about, if we're talking about best practices, and we're talking about needing to start children at earlier ages, every elementary school has to have a program before we start. to have a program before we start talking about, you know, high school academies that you, you'd have to give up two periods to get to from my district, if you could get there, and you'd probably have to drive yourself, because I found that for something else for my daughter, you know, when she was there. You can't get to certain academies from certain parts, if they're only offered in certain parts. Again, we go back through the whole equity issue. So I don't mean to crush my colleagues, but I think I would approach it in, in different ways. I think we do, I do agree with those who are passionate about this issue, that we need to be intentional, because we have not been intentional, if we have the monies to be intentional. And I think, again, just as I suggested when we were talking about the other programs, we need to be intentional first at the levels where it will serve best, and that's the youngest kids in the classroom, at least ensuring that every elementary school offers some type of foreign language education, because I have several that do not. You know, lack vertical articulation, I mean, sometimes, you know, when you first start taking, if you choose to, and that is a problem too, it's really a problem to be a, a second language speaker. If you don't have the interest, if you're, if you're not, if you're not exposed to it in elementary school, and then you're a child who wants to explore different options in middle school because you have that, we have an amazing menu of things we can choose from. You are sometimes starting a language for the first time in ninth grade. Wow. That's hard. It's difficult. It's very, very difficult. Scott, I have to ask you, because my, my experiences, not just from my kids, you know, because my kids are two people, but for other people in my pyramids and in my area, we, we have not had, it is, we have not had the strongest teachers at some of our programs. And so I worry about when you talk about lessening the standards. So, I, I'd like, I, I don't think I understand exactly, you, you don't have to, it's late in the hour, and you, we can talk about it offline, but I, I, I want to really state that.
Well, so, I, I'm going to, I'll talk a little bit, and then we have two go-backs, just hang on a second. I just, so, this, I hope this has been helpful. This is kind of like, well, no, I mean, this is kind of like, let's put it out on the table, and, all right, I will, I'll, I will come back to you. But I, I just, I just kind of want to, this has been a little messy, I think it took longer than I expected, and I've tried, you know, to just kind of, you know, as meeting manager, I want to move things along, but on the other hand, it's just a little bit of like, let's put the meat on the table and see, you know. But I, what I'm hearing, and probably everybody else's too, is, I, I think if, you know, we, we have to walk our talk, right? And we have said that this is a priority, but we also know that priorities cost money. So my thought is, you know, maybe for the next budget cycle, the superintendent's proposed budget, I mean, if you came to us with a number and some optional plans, I just feel like there's a decision grid here that I need to look at, and what amount of money that, you know, the superintendent feels like we can loosen up from other things. And then it's up to the board to decide, okay, we put that money over here, and we put the other needs over here, we find out what we have, and maybe we can't do it. But this, this, the next conversation about this could be more strategic and a little more efficient, if we had, you know, a bucket and some things that we think we might be able to do with it. So, all right, on, on that note, Elizabeth, and then Karen Kees-Gamar.
Yes, Dr. Brabham, you said at one point, and it, I'd actually already thought about it, but then you reinforced it with your statement, what is the process for a school deciding to remove a language? We're talking about adding in, but what, what happens when a school says, oh, no, we're not going to offer that? I mean, is there a process, or is this just?
I'm sorry, I have to leave Ms. Schultz. See you next Thursday.
Save the best for last. Save the best for last.
Are you speaking at the high school level? Are you?
I guess I am, because really, that's the only, it's really the only place that's like, you know, unactive or, or is built into the structure. So yes, I, I guess I'm specifically speaking at high schools.
So typically, those decisions are made based on academic advising and what students select, right? So they, they start to see a pattern where they're not having sufficient numbers to staff a class. They will look to phasing out. They always keep in mind that we need at least three years towards graduation to get an advanced studies diploma. So they won't just say, we're going to stop teaching Russian tomorrow, right? But they will start to look at a longer-term plan to start to phase out if they're not seeing the student interest.
Okay, so I would get, I would ask that any plan that comes to us, I think there has to be a safeguard put in place, because to me, that's a funding, and that's that whole issue of getting it down to, well, if the school system is taking money away for a theoretical FCPS on thing that's going to happen, I'm not going to be able to fund a half-position, or it was a full position, and now I'm taking it to a half-staff, and that, that employee can no longer, they can't sustain themselves at a half-staff, and they can't, the next closest place is halfway across the county. I mean, I physically have the hardest district to get around, so even if there is an academy or program, you know, someplace, you can't, you can't, I mean, it takes me 45 minutes sometimes to get between two schools. And that's just me driving, not on a bus. So I, I do think that the mechanism by which a, a language is taken away, that needs, that, that cannot just be one building, principal, master schedule, budgeting issue. That's, that's got to go beyond before we make those decisions. And then with regards to the EF discussion, I'm going to tell you, I got, I, I like had the hair stuck up on the back of my neck. I am very uncomfortable about that whole arrangement unless and until we understand any arrangement like that, what's the arm's length? Who's getting paid? Because I'm telling you, somebody is getting something. And I, we, we weren't particularly good at it, at it today or in the past. We do have to refrain from using prior superintendents' names. I mean, we just say a for, a former superintendent, but any relationship that we're entering into to give kids opportunities to travel or get special things, the, the need to inject transparency on stuff like that is paramount, whether it's on a sole-source contract, or somebody's going for free, or somebody's getting, you know, spiffs, that whole thing makes me very uncomfortable. So if we go forward and create new opportunities, it has to be with the utmost transparency.
Karen?
I will be very quick. We just talked about the strategic plan, and as part of that, we talked about college and career readiness. And so I would say, I think we're all saying this, but I just want to put it in this context, preparing our kids with this language, I don't think we can achieve college and career readiness without what we're talking about today. So I just wanted to say that this actually does fall into what we discussed earlier today, and perhaps we need to look at it from, in that context.
Okay, Scott, do you want the last word?
I would just want to share from Ariand, it was a good day. I just want to tie a few things together. We've had a strategic plan with a lot of things in it, and administration, I know maybe sometimes you'd say, I don't know if that's true, but the administration, over the long course of time, overall, has wanted to make the board happy. Sometimes, what does that really mean in practice? We've got to bring back to the board hard decisions about things we either failed at or did with incomplete fidelity of implementation. We've had a tendency to want to tell you what you would have wanted to hear so we can get on to the next topic at hand. I'm sorry, but I just need to say that. So part of what the beginning of the day was with the strategic plan is saying, and, and I'm in the middle of it a little bit, is a pressure of the superintendent both ways to make a deal with staff. Scott, staff says, we can't do all of this at once. We keep saying we're overwhelmed, no one's listening. Okay, we can't do it all at once, but dag on it, we can't do anything well across the system, we're losing credibility. We're going to bring you a narrower scope. If I can bring a narrow scope to this board, and the board will say yes, then I expect you to do it, and I'm going to hold you accountable. That's, that's what I'm in the middle of right now after year one. Hey, you're a nice guy, you care, but we've got to, we've got to cut a deal. We'll do it to fidelity, but it can't be all these pieces that people go, oh, my God. So that's one thing I just want to say. Two, we need to be more honest when we do budget, and I didn't feel that way this year, first fully funded budget, but when stuff gets cut, that means stuff isn't going to be done, and we need to come back and tell you what's not going to be done. We haven't always wanted to just bring that back up. We've let everybody think everything, we'll just figure out a way to get things to happen, even whether it's trades, to trade off, to try to make something work, to still have people there to get the work done, or check that green dot to say, yep, we finished it, and we know we did it in some schools. That's just not, it's not, you know, it, it happened in some schools, so you can kind of color green, but did it happen in everyone? And did we knock on every door to see? But I'm submitting to you that moving forward, we're going to have these hard conversations. Sometimes I'm going to bring you back failure, sometimes I'm going to bring you in incomplete, but I'm going to bring it back. We're going to do it before stuff's done. We didn't do FCPS on. You asked me to slow down and do community engagement last year about this time in the fall, and I slowed down, and I did community engagement. You asked me today to get a plan? We're going to bring a plan. You asked for next steps in internationalization and foreign language, we're going to go back tomorrow, we're going to have a little bit of a longer LT. It was an hour, I looked, our previous agenda was an hour. It's going to be a little longer than an hour now, and figure out what our next steps are. But the more I think that we do this as a group together, as a team, the better the system's going to be, and the transparency of our conversation here, we'll go back out to the community to go, at least we know the rationale between what we're doing and what we're not doing, what we're funding and what we're not funding. We haven't funded, and Mr. Moon knew that, this, this year, and I learned it, we haven't funded the academy for 10 years. Flat staffing. We pulled back on staffing for principals, cut class size. You know what happens when class size gets cut? You start looking at the lowest enrolled classes, whether it's foreign language, and Ryan would like it, and Mr. Moon, but I got to cut something. That's what's happened. So we all, I'm going to share in owning from here out, every, well, I mean, owned from a year ago, July 10th to now, all this, and we need to recast the conversation that we're going to bring you our success, we're going to bring you our failure too. And I know this sounds hard, because I know sometimes I do it. But making it okay to fail and go, Scott, I'm disappointed, I'm upset, but tell me how we're going to make it better, and spend more time doing that than the upset, and, you know, even today, I, Ms. Schultz saying it, we do have a tendency to want to personalize and bring the people into it, and that's, that's, even whether it's board members to board members or board members to staff, and that's not going to get us the courage to bring you back when we're doing well, but even the greater courage of when we haven't done what we're, we had hoped to do, or the formula didn't work. Sloan pushed, he pushed with finance and said it wasn't workable. Finance said it was. So guess what? Did we bring you back that conflict? Nope. We just kept it lower and hoped it would just sort of all work out. And it hasn't. So I, I'm leaving feeling better and better about bringing this to you, and I think as, as the more and more staff sees that we can have these conversations, and they're not, they're going to be lively, they're going to, they're going to be long, but they're going to be respectful, and we're going to get better as a result of it. That's the biggest thing I feel the board wants, even the staff wants to. Just Scott, it's not going to be perfect tomorrow, make it better than it was. Is it better this year than it was last year? And hopefully, that can be the same thing we're going to say.
Superintendent growth progression.
That's it. That's it.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. I know Karen has something to say. Madam Clerk, do we also have next steps from this conversation? Just a couple. Karen, do you want to go now or wait?
Mine aren't pertinent to this discussion, it's just kind of a summary before all the board members leave to just give them a foreshadowing of what's going to happen tomorrow night and next week.
All right, let's go ahead and do quick next steps, then.
And maybe, I, I don't know, that Teresa and Sarah want to stay for next steps, so maybe we could thank them and let them get on about their day. Thank you so much.
Can I borrow your microphone? We didn't really get into LTC curriculum and a lot of what we do, but if anyone has any questions, please feel free to email me. I'll write my email somewhere. I think our program has a lot of value. I really enjoy it, the students really enjoy it, and it has shown to raise their test scores significantly. So if you have any doubts or any questions about my program, please email me, I'd love to talk with you about it.
Okay, thank you. Sloan, why don't you send her email to all of us? How's that?
We will do that as a next step.
Thank you. All right, next steps, Janie Strauss. Number one. I guess that's fine. Did I, the other issue that I had was licensure.
Probably critical.
But, yeah, look more closely at adding critical languages, yeah. Critical, not target. Yeah. Critical, it's.
Just in high school, Janie, or?
Well, it, anywhere, but it, it's easier at high school, and then my other issue was licensure. If we could get past the elementary licensure, we'd be up to almost 100 schools at elementary that we could probably staff. All right, so, number two, Elizabeth, look at additional grants.
And I'd like to know the status of the Chinese language sourcing for teachers.
Chinese language sourcing.
Confucius Institute partnership in terms of funding teachers.
All right, number three, explore options. Karen Corbett Sanders.
This is really, all three of mine are really the concept of come back to us with a plan that, like, with actual action items, the cost of it, and timelines, that, all of that stuff comes from the original internationalization working group, and we haven't done this, and so let's pull it all together into a refreshed plan so that we can make informed decisions.
So I'm sorry, you're looking at your three, four, and five, and pulling them together as an update on the?
On coming back to us with a plan, an overall, an integrated plan for internationalization, including what they think they can do year one, year two, year three, and costs associated with it.
It sounds large.
I think it's captured in one of mine as well, so let's just keep it there and.
Okay, all right, no, I'm just, I just want to make sure I know what we're asking them to do, because you said something about going out to each embassy and developing a?
No, I'm not asking, explore options, so that what you do, the original internationalization working group came back and said, we can accomplish much of this by having plan, having strategic relationships with the embassies. So for example, when I was in Europe, I used to teach an international business class that had, this is where it came from, that I had all of the embassies in Brussels come in and spend time with our international business students. So it's the same type of thing.
Sounds great. That's what you're asking the system to do, is to go to embassies and have them, I'm just, does this make sense?
It was part of the original plan.
Okay, does that make sense? Number three. I'm not sure I understand it, but if other people do.
Works for me.
Okay, great. Number four, mention adding Vietnamese to Falls Street High School to list of accomplishments. Sandy?
Uh.
Yeah, okay. Number five, provide data regarding accessibility of language for all students in the county. I think, yeah, and Ryan, you said something about kind of like a heat map. Does that sound right?
Mine are down below.
Okay, and Karen Kees-Gamar is not here.
She was fine with her.
She's fine, okay. Six.
The rest are mine.
The rest are yours, take a look at them.
I'm fine with them.
Oh, because that's what you sent in. Okay, of course you're fine with them, you wrote them. Is that it then? Okay. All right, Karen, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure. So tomorrow night, we will have a public hearing on school safety and the budget, and we have 28 speakers. And so we, starting at 5:30, we should be done by right around 7:00. And so I have suggested to the clerk that we don't need a full meal, but instead, maybe just some snacks in the back. Secondly, the 23rd work session, we are going to be adding the SRO MOU to it, and so we'll be looking at, at the loading of that work session to see if we're going to keep everything that's on there. And then finally, we had sent an email over the weekend requesting your input, both Illyon and I would like to know what your priorities are for committees and liaisons. And I know today's been a really long day, so if I could ask you to send it to us by tomorrow's work, tomorrow's hearing, that would be great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't you wish we were having a PEC session now?
Do we have a due sitting chart tomorrow?